And Cindy just taught me another thing. He just taught me something else with Zoom.
My husband calls me a genius, just to let you know.
Well, we agree with him.
I'm assuming that's why he's your husband.
Exactly.
Hey, John and Cindy, how do things go out at Four Seasons with the supervisors?
That is on the 15th.
Oh, that last one wasn't there?
No.
Oh, okay.
We did a, because of the technical issues, we had the planning committee beginning of June, we had the last meeting, we did virtual only. Or am I, Cindy, am I missing, am I misremembering?
We didn't have one on the third.
Right.
The last one was the 17th of June, and that was virtual and remote, but didn't go well because of the the audio.
That's right.
Hi, Brian.
Hello.
How you doing, Brian?
Doing well. About yourself?
Hanging in there.
Good. I was this afternoon.
Nice.
Before the rain, yep.
So we, I have Jim Hackett, he gave me a call, didn't hear my phone ring. He showed up in Township Building. Hey, Jim, I got your message. We're doing virtual only. All right, thank you, Jim, I appreciate it. Bye.
Bye. So Jim is, Jim is headed home and he's gonna get on as soon as he can.
Okay. So Dwight, the link didn't work for him. I'm gonna see if I can email him the agenda and get him on.
Yeah, I noticed the link in the email didn't work, but the link on the agenda worked.
Hey, John. Tom Bennett just called me, said the link he has isn't working.
Okay, I will send the agenda to him too.
Thank you.
Hey, John, are you ready to get started?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome you to the July 8th meeting of the East Tenfield Township Planning Commission. Since this is a virtual meeting only, and to try to help things go a little more smoothly, we'd like to ask that if, well, obviously you're on the call, but if you would please mute your microphone until you're asked to join the conversation. Likewise, at the bottom of your screen, there's a chat function that we would like you to use if you want to be called upon to weigh in on any of the agenda items tonight. And then it's appropriate time, you'll be called to join with video and audio. So I believe all the regulars will be here this evening, even though they may be a little late. I see Dwight just joined. So I'm gonna not ask any of the alternates to act as regular members this evening. It'll just be the regular planning commission members to vote. However, everybody, all the alternates are welcome and encouraged to join in the conversation. The first item on the agenda is approval of the meeting from June 24th. As I went over them, John, I had a note that Julie Will had abstained from the first motion about the modifications. But if you're sure by listening to the audio that you have it correct, then I will not recommend any changes.
No, unfortunately, Nate had to do these minutes without me present, so she did abstain.
Yeah, I thought so. Look, actually, he has her down for abstaining from another group. But I believe she only abstained from the first one, which was the long list of modifications, 1, 2, 5, 10, 11, and so forth.
Got my notes from the last meeting. You are correct, Jim.
Are we muted, Jim?
Dwight's asking if he's muted.
No, I hear him.
Okay. I also had a correction on the fourth paragraph on page two, as I recall anyway. Mr. Rohr moved to recommend approval of the modification of number six with the addition of the third street light at the emergency access drive and the permanent cul-de-sac area. I think you should use the word "at" the permanent cul-de-sac area. I don't want it to be confused that we want two streetlights within that there.
Okay, I'll make that change.
Thank you.
So then, John, to continue on with the correction of the minutes, there's two paragraphs that would be changed. The second paragraph on page two, where it should not be 7-0, but it should be 6-0-1 with Mrs. Will abstaining. And then this third paragraph should be 7-0, I believe.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And then the the things that Mr. Rohr mentioned.
Right, that's the fifth paragraph, yeah. Or no, where is it? Yes, fourth paragraph.
Yep.
So the modifications changes to the second, third, and fourth paragraphs on page two. Does anybody else have any corrections to bring to bear?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes as amended this evening.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mrs. Byrne, that we approve the minutes as modified this evening with changes to paragraphs 2, 3, and 4 on page two. John, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Rohr?
Aye.
Mrs. Byrne? Mrs. Byrne?
Yeah, aye.
Has Mr. Hackett joined us yet? Mr. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Deeder?
Aye.
Mr. Polakowski?
Abstaining.
Mr. Guerenger? I don't think he joined us yet. Mr. Celdus?
John, they're not voting this evening.
Okay. And Mr. Fullerton?
Aye.
So I have I have 5-0-1.
That's what I have too.
With Mr. Polakowski abstaining.
Yes, and Mr. Polakowski is abstaining and Mr. Hackett's not. All right, the first action item for this evening is the Community Fellowship Church, a revised final land development plan. And do we have a presenter for the applicants?
Dave, you're muted.
Yeah, that was Dave.
Now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I turned my video on, but I didn't unmute myself. So yes, my name's Dave Christian. I'm here to present the plans this evening, and I believe Jason Craig, Pastor Jason Craig with Community Fellowship Church is with us as well. You want me to just present our case?
Yes, if you would go through that, please, and then we'll just take a look at the modifications and the engineer's comments.
Okay. All right, well, what you're looking at on your screen, I presume everybody can see a sheet in front of you with a green box toward the lower left-hand corner. Is that correct?
Yes.
So what you're looking at here is the existing conditions plan. This just gives you a brief sense of what's existing on the property at this moment. So this was a land development plan that was designed, approved, and constructed back in 2001 to orientate you to the site. If you're not familiar, to the right-hand side or to the east of the drawing is the Bethel Drive cul-de-sac bulb. So that's where the existing entrance into the site presently occurs, in the form of an access drive, heading back to the parking compound, which essentially is situated around the east and south side of the existing church building. 196 existing parking spaces, I believe, with the church building shown approximately in the middle. As you see it on this particular plan. Once again, this is the existing conditions plan. You'll see to the left of the existing building, there is an open area, there's an existing playground there. I don't know, John, if you can see the little gray box down right there. Yes, that is an existing playground, which will have to be relocated to address the proposed expansion. And what you're seeing to the left of the playground is a drainage easement that encumbers an existing drainage swell that takes the drainage from the north side of the building around to the west and down towards the existing detention basin, which is situated down in the lower left-hand corner above the green box. So that just gives you a sense of the existing conditions. And then there's a second existing detention basin over to the far lower right-hand corner, which we're not going to be affecting any change to. So that's the existing condition, John. If you can turn to, I believe it was sheet, the next one I told you to bring up. Sheet three. Not sure how well you can see this on your screen, but there's the existing building once again shown in not a gray tone, but then the building in the gray tone to the west or the left of the existing building is the proposed expansion as we're proposing to you with our revised land development plan here this evening. To the left of that, then you'll see how we're relocating the playground, sliding it a little bit further to the west. And as a result of needing to move the playground to the west, we had to revise the storm drainage easement for the swell that today allows that drainage swell to go to the west of the building. In the existing playground, it has to go further to the west. And as a result of that, we are piping some of that drainage now as opposed to the drainage swell which existed currently, so that the water can still get down to the same detention basin as it currently exists. I will point out for you that the way we're addressing stormwater management is we are going to be altering that existing detention basin in the lower left-hand corner and converting that into a combination detention infiltration basin. That allows us to allow the basin to continue to do what it was previously designed to do, but it's also now going to allow us to address the volume criteria reduction that's in your existing stormwater management ordinance that was not in the ordinance back in 2002 when the original land development plan was approved. And then if you can go on to the next slide, John, in the land development plan package. And what you're gonna see, this is just a blow-up now. You can see a little bit better what's going on up at the church building expansion. So what you're seeing there, the red lines are the proposed contour lines. So that's what tells your engineer, when he does his review, and also the contractor, it'll tell him how he needs to shape this property or this ground to accommodate the proposed building expansion. There, you can see a little bit better picture of the drainage pipe that goes to the left or the west of the new playground location. The playground, instead of being in a rectangular shape, it's now in more of a kidney shape with some free-form walkways that'll lead from the parking lot back to a side entrance into the new building. You're also seeing some dashed heavy lines coming out of the building to the left of the proposed building. Those are roof drains where our roof drainage goes underground into some storm pipe. Once again, getting that out to the swell and getting it into the existing pipe that exists under the existing parking lot convey the storm drainage down to our detention infiltration facility. Should point out, while we're looking at this drawing, might be hard to decipher, but to the lower left-hand corner of the west side of the building addition, there is an existing sewer service lateral and an existing water service lateral that goes into the existing building. Those two service laterals will just have to be shortened. So they'll come into the building at the new location to the left of the proposed building. We're not proposing any changes to any public sewer or water as a result of this project, and we do have both our Water Authority, Henfield Water Authority and Langston Area Sewer Authority approval letters in. That's really all I have on the land development plan. I'm gonna ask John to show some architecturals so we can give you a flavor of what the building's like. I will point out while we're still on this particular plan that there is no, and that's all right, John, you can leave it here. Just wanted to point out before I forget, we're not proposing any expansion of parking. Your township revised your parking criteria a little while back, and when we run that new formula on the building as we currently exist with the proposed expansion, there is enough parking on-site today. There's actually 396 parking spaces. We will be moving a shed that sits on top of four parking spaces that were part of the 2010 approval that will allow us to get up to the number of parking spaces as we present on our proposal at this time. So we're not increasing any parking as a result of what we're proposing, and I should also point out that we're not increasing any seats in the sanctuary, and that's what we're gonna see here in a moment. This is just a rendering of the front of the church. Essentially, the right two-thirds is the existing church, and the left third is the proposed expansion. You'll see a little bit better how this all falls together as I take you through a couple of these architectural plans real quick. So that's what the building currently looks like on the right and what it'll look like with the additional on the left. You'll note that the roof structure of the proposed addition stays well below the height of the existing church. We had secured a variance back in 2001 to exceed the maximum height allowable in your zoning ordinance, just by a little bit to get that roof to be shaped as it currently is today. We're not going to be in need of any further variance for that, as you can see. If you can go to the next sheet, John? Just an architectural plan. For those of you that are more two-dimensionally oriented, this shows you the existing building, and this would be the proposed lower level of the church. So everything that's not highlighted in yellow is already there. That's the limits of the existing church, and then everything to the west or the left is the proposed church. And you'll see, it's probably hard for you to read, but I have some notes here just to kind of let you know what's going on on that particular floor. It's essentially a classroom space for toddlers. One, there's a separate room for one, two, three, four, and five-year-olds. There's a little bit of office space and then hallway and steps and a small expanded cafe space inside the existing building that is not in the existing building today. Those seats were all accounted for in our parking calculation, both the sanctuary and the cafe seats. Next slide, John? This would be the proposed upper level. The upper level is actually where the existing sanctuary is. So once again, everything that's not highlighted in yellow is the existing church as it exists today. And then everything to the left is our proposed expansion. So once again, you can see we're about 28, 30% increase in floor area. Pretty much similar to the previous plan, which I didn't point out, about a 28, 30% increase in square footage. On this particular floor, you're looking at once again, a little bit of an expanded lobby with an expanded, a couple new tables of cafe space. Music practice and music storage on this floor. Student ministries for, we had the toddlers addressed downstairs, the high school students are addressed upstairs with a room for themselves. Small conference room expansion. Men's and women's restroom and a videography and graphics design space for their production preparation. Next slide, John? Go through these real quickly. Just wanted to give you a flavor of what it looks like. You saw the front elevation in the rendering I shared with you on the first slide. This shows you the four elevations, two of which were improperly labeled. But we do have the south, the north, the east, and the west elevations of the existing church as it exists today. And then if you go to the next one, John, or the next two actually, but the first one will show you two of the facades. Once again, I've highlighted for you in yellow the proposed building addition, so that you can get a sense of the building that's there. The upper elevation or the south elevation is the elevation that faces Route 30. Below that, the west elevation is the elevation that faces Christ the King Church to the west. Just to give you a sense of scale and the extent of the expansion that we're proposing. Next slide, John? And then, excuse me, these are the other two facades. The upper elevation is the north elevation. That's the side of the building that faces the woods or the hillside up to the water tower up the top of the hill. And the bottom elevation or the east elevation is the one that faces Bethel Drive. So you can see the visual impact facing Bethel Drive is minimal, because most of what we're proposing is behind the existing building. And the largest impact in terms of the visual impact is primarily from Route 30. You could also say from the north, but those folks sit way up on the hillside behind a pretty significant amount of trees in terms of the impact that we would have on them in that regard visually. So that's our elevation, architectural elevation. Real quickly, I'd just like to let you know that the site is zoned low-density residential. Your zoning ordinance permits local places of worship, which is defined by your ordinance as any church having less than 500 seats in the area of largest assembly. So as I mentioned before, we have 400 seats today. We'll have 400 seats with the proposed expansion. We're not looking to expand the sanctuary at all. Lot size 8.8 acres, maximum lot coverage permitted by your zoning ordinance is 40%. With the building expansion will only be at 28.2%. But I can be honest with you and let you know, I think after this expansion, the site's probably pretty well matched out. Because if you were to look at the site today, it's either building, landscaped area, parking, or stormwater. So there's not a whole place, not a whole lot of places that future expansion could occur. We conform to all other zoning requirements of your ordinance, lot width, frontage, front side and rear yard setbacks, building height we talked about previously. I mentioned the fact that we're serviced by both public sewer and public water. We have both those approval letters in hand. We were actually approved back in 2001 for what they call three EDUs of sewer and water capacity. The church today is using less than one of those three EDUs. And we're projected to be slightly over one EDU with this proposed expansion. So we actually have more capacity than we need in terms of what was previously approved. Parking, we talked about. Your ordinance requires us to have 169 spaces. We have 194 spaces existing. I mentioned that we're gonna try and grab four spaces back that we lost to a storage shed. So we are well above what your ordinance requires, and we believe we have enough parking to accommodate our needs moving forward. We're required to have six ADA spaces, one of which must be van accessible. And the plan currently has those six spaces, so we're not proposing any increase in handicap spaces. And then lastly, the ordinance requires us to have a certain amount of bicycle rack space. Once again, based upon the total number of parking spaces we need, we're required to have five, five bike, four bike rack spaces, and we're proposing a five space bike rack. So that's everything I wanted to talk about in terms of reviewing the project with you. I'm happy to go over the township's engineers review letter. I'm prepared to do that, but maybe I'll ask if you have any questions on what I presented so far at this point.
Well, Dave, before you do, Mr. Fullerton, I did get a comment from Cindy Broadbeck. She was asking about a sinkhole that is across from the residential properties on Bethel Drive, and if the stormwater runoff from the church and the addition of the church will affect those properties on Bethel Drive. So Dave, if you could address that.
Certainly. Do you know, is this on the south or the north side of Bethel Drive, John? Do you have any idea?
Well, to the south side is the townhomes and to the north side is I'm not sure which one she's referring to.
You got. Yeah, if you go back to, can I ask you to go back to the second land development plan we showed, the one that showed the basin grading in the lower left hand corner, John? The answer to that is no, but I'd like to be as as thorough as I can here.
You mean page three or page five?
Page, let me look here quick. If you could go to page five, please. No, I'm sorry, make it three. Yes, three. Okay, so the only thing we're impacting and Bethel Drive cul-de-sac would be to the far right, it's actually off the sheet because this is a blow up of the western half of the property. We're not affecting any change to anything to the right of the existing building. Other than we did an assessment of the landscaping in the parking lot and found three or four minor instances where we were not addressing the current landscape screening requirement with what was proposed and constructed or installed back in 2001. So we are doing a little bit of supplemental landscaping to the east of the church, but other than that, no increased impervious, no increased stormwater, no change to any grades and so forth. So to answer the question, no, we won't have any impact on any of the drainage that currently exists or occurs to the east of the existing building. What we are doing is increasing the impervious coverage that goes to the basin to the lower left hand corner. And that's where I mentioned before, to address the current ordinance requirements, we're actually lowering the bottom of that basin. The basin will now have a flat bottom instead of a sloped bottom. So essentially, in layman's terms, we've increased the volume to address the increased runoff that will be coming from our proposed building expansion. And then the flat bottom allows us to infiltrate the appropriate portion into the ground, which is current ordinance criteria that didn't exist back in 2002. So I hope that answers the question.
Okay, thanks, Dave. John or Cindy, is there anybody else that would like to?
I didn't see any comments in the chat chat room. Questions or comments?
I have nothing.
Any general questions about the plan before we look at the modifications and specific? Okay. If everybody has had a chance to look at the the comments that came from the township engineer, you should see that those modifications are recommended for approval. Is there anything else that Scott would like to or John would like to make about those modifications? It seems like they were fairly modest ones, and the applicant had the rationale justification that satisfies us.
They were very straightforward and pretty typical.
Okay. All right, if there's no further discussion on modifications, I'd like to take a motion for action on them.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval modification request one and two for the Community Fellowship Church, subject to staff and engineer comments.
I'm sorry, who was that? I didn't, wasn't looking.
I'll second the motion.
And who is that? Is that Brian?
That's Matt.
Matt, okay. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Datter, seconded by Mr. Palakowski, that we recommend approval of the modifications one and two for the Community Fellowship Church revised final land development, subject to the staff and engineers' comments. John, would you please call the roll?
I want to apologize to all the members. I started backwards from our last meeting. From our last meeting. Mr. Palakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Datter? Mr. Biggs?
Hi.
Mr. Hackett?
Hi.
Mrs. Byrne?
Hi.
Mr. Rohr?
Hi.
Mr. Fullerton?
Hi.
I have seven to zero in favor of the motion.
Correct, that's what I have. Okay. Question back to Dave Christian at this point. Again, we reviewed the letter from the township engineer. Is there anything in there that you cannot comply with?
No, I just have one clarification, and everything else I actually made a resubmission back to your engineer's office today. I wouldn't expect that he would have looked at anything at this point. So everything has been, in my opinion, technically addressed, subject to his reapproval. The only question I had for him or for you is what exactly are you looking for in terms of our confirming or checking the existing lighting and and whether it meets today's standards? There's a comment we got back that suggests we meet some IESNA, I believe it is, cutoff criteria and check our foot candle levels at the residential property lines. Are you looking for us to make an assessment now on that situation or exactly what might you be looking for? Just need a clarification there. And that has to do with, I should give you a comment number.
Number eight.
Number eight. That's the only clarification I need. Everything else has either been addressed or is administrative that'll come a little bit later here very soon, of course.
Dave, I think we were just looking for a note on the plan saying that those fixtures would comply with that with that requirement.
So so for example, Scott, in order for us to do that, do we just put the note on the plan? Or do we need to get a meter reading out there along the property lines and show you now that we are in conformance? For example, I think your ordinance today requires, I think you have it in there, a half a foot candle maximum at the property line, five feet above grade, I believe. I'm not looking at the comment right now.
I think it was one tenth, one tenth of a foot candle, five feet away.
Okay. Do we or should we attempt to ascertain that we're in compliance with that at this particular point in time?
Are you proposing, could you remind me, are you proposing any new lights on that side?
The only new lights will be what'll be on the building itself, which will be, I think there's one above the door on the south side of the building addition, and these are security wall packs. No new parking lot lighting, no new light standards of any kind in the parking lot. All be building related to the architectures and not so much the site.
And none of them will be on that side of the building that they would impact this?
Other than the one obviously on the front of the, there's a door on the front of the expanded part of the building that'll face Route 30. I guess you could say you might be able to see that particular light fixture from the Bethel Drive cul-de-sac bulb, perhaps.
Yeah, I think with, I think if you can just provide us with what the photometrics would be for that light to show that it doesn't exceed the distance to the property line, then I think that that would satisfy this. And you can just do that on the, from the supplier. They typically have a photometric drawing. You can show the distance out and show that it doesn't it doesn't impede on this ordinance requirement.
I understand what you're asking. We can certainly do that.
Okay.
That was the only clarification I had. I'm prepared to talk to anyone specifically if anybody has any questions, but really all I have to say is I don't have any disagreement with any of the comments. We did get a letter, approval letter from the township's emergency service coordinator. So we have that in hand. I mentioned the two sewer and water authority letters. We have that in hand. We also have an approval letter from the Langston County Conservation District for our sedimentation erosion control plan. So if if.
That's good, Dave. That's that's what we wanted to hear. With hearing that, I don't think we need to go through all those point by point.
Great, great.
Does anybody on the planning commission have any other questions or comments before we take a motion on the plan? Okay, if not, let's let's make a recommendation to the board supervisor.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the Community Fellowship Church revised final land development plan, conditioned on resolution of all outstanding staff and engineering comments.
Chair, I'll second that motion.
Is that Brian or Matt?
I think both of us.
I think both of the same thing.
Well, we'll do you again, Matt. That way John won't get it mixed up. Okay, we have a motion again by Mr. Datter, seconded by Mr. Palakowski, that we recommend approval of the revised final land development plan for Community Fellowship Church, subject to the resolution of all the engineers' comments. John, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Palakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Datter?
Hi.
Mr. Biggs?
Hi.
Mr. Hackett?
Hi.
Mrs. Byrne?
Hi.
Mr. Rohr?
Hi.
Mr. Fullerton? Was that an I, Mr. Fullerton?
I, yes, sorry, I.
I have a seven to zero in favor of the motion.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay, thanks to Mr. Christian and Mr. Craig for being here this evening.
Thank you all, and I got my way first, my through my first Zoom planning commission meeting, so I thank you for that. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
You bet. Good night.
Thank you, Dave. All right, the next action item for this evening is the Village Residential and Village Center Zone Tax Amendment. John, I assume that you are going to be walking us through that one?
Wasn't planning on, Mr. Fullerton.
Okay.
We had the last time.
Well, we we've seen this, I guess it was a couple of months ago, and I think it was the May meeting. After that meeting, Mr. Garringer sent out some notes. We had some audio trouble on that meeting, and he sent out some notes regarding his thoughts. If anybody who's read through the ordinance and read Mr. Garringer's comments would like to discuss any of those, I think that would be appropriate this evening. Also, I believe it was in the the packet that came out, there were some letters from residents mostly against the ordinance, but some for the ordinance. So again, I trust that the planning commission members have taken time to read those and get the flavor of what's been submitted. So at this point, I'll open it up to first the planning commission members for any discussion.
Mr. Fullerton, I did find Dennis's email.
Right.
And I did put that on the screen for everybody to see.
Okay. It was also attached in Nate's packet, by the way, John.
Oh, okay.
Can I add a couple of thoughts? This is Dennis, and what I'm thinking is this is probably, these amendments are probably the outcome from discussions that took place before I was an alternate member. So I don't have the full background as to what's trying to be achieved. But when I read the amendments, I see issues in trying to identify what it is the goal is. And I see problems that are going to be created if we go with this text. And and some of the simpler things are that when you use the wording of the text, it regulates structures, which are more than buildings, and it requires a conditional use approval if a structure is greater than 400 square feet. Now, for example, the average above ground swimming pool would by definition meet structure, the term structure. And they are over 400 square feet. So if somebody wanted to take out their above ground swimming pool, we'd be requiring them to go through a conditional use hearing and submit an awful lot of data to the township. And that submission for them or or anybody else, if it was involved with a land development plan or a subdivision plan, there's another set of standards for demolition in the zoning ordinance, which although similar, differ from what's in the zoning. And there's no provision in this ordinance amendment or in the zoning ordinance that says if you've already accomplished this through the subdivision ordinance, you need not accomplish it again, resubmiting and getting another determination when you submit under a zoning ordinance. So I just think that the process needs to be be looked at. And and as a different point, if it is a accessory use use that's small, it allows a determination by the zoning officer. And that's a single individual determination more often related to enforcing ordinances that are easily identifiable for compliance. In other words, it says a building has to be In other words, it says a building has to be set back 30 feet. Well, a tape measurement, the building setback, it's, it's something that's more obvious compliance, where the demolition standards talk about, there's not a, an economic use that could be provided for what's being asked for demolition. That's more of a subjective decision, and it's more something related to board decisions, I, I believe, than, than related to individuals. And, and my memo, I was trying to point out some of the soft spots in the amendments, but suggesting that, that maybe we talk about what we're trying to accomplish. And, and there might be an easier, better way of doing this. So I had problems with the, the text that is proposed.
John, has anybody in the township office, well, supervisors had a weigh-in on Dennis's memo?
No.
Because my assumption is that if we make some of these, I, I would say significant changes that Dennis is referring to, this whole process would get sent back to ground zero. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. And I, I see Dennis where you're coming from, but on the other hand, I'm not sure that we want to throw all this out and start over.
All right, I'm jumping in late, so.
Yeah, I, I understand, and I do appreciate the time that you've spent to go through this paragraph by paragraph. I think one thing for sure, you'll be on the next committee that looks at ordinance amendments. Thanks for volunteering. How about anybody else on the planning commission? Is there any input about any of these of Dennis's comments or the, or your own comments about where we're going with this?
I, I understood the, the goal here of, of what, what the supervisors were trying to accomplish, trying to keep from redevelopment of some of our village properties, turning them into high-density apartment buildings, that type of thing, changing the character of the villages. So I, I respect that, appreciate that. I, I saw the county comments as well. And I think Dennis brings up some good points here. I'm, I'm waffling a little, and I'd like to hear some more of the commissioners' thoughts on this. I, I mean, I, I hate to stop the process and redo it, but I also want to have a good product when we adopt an ordinance.
About any other commissions?
John, what's the urgency on this? I mean, I, are we having some plans coming in that we're concerned about?
I'm, I'm glad you asked, Mr. Rohr. We did have a, a meeting, staff and Scott Hain and Nick Eversol. We had a meeting with members of the county planning commission based on their comments. At this point in time, the county planning commission has tabled our ordinance. One, so staff could have some discussion with the county planning commission staff on ways to, I don't want to say revise or amend our ordinance to address some of their comments, but ways that we could work together to address some of their comments. It'll probably come down to, we'll probably be making some amendments to this draft ordinance. But I wanted to get, bring us to the planning commission to get comments from you all before we start that, before we actually bring this back towards, to, to the play, geez, board, to recognize the changes to the, this ordinance. Because we don't want to do this more than once. There's comments or changes, and I think you're right, Mr. Rohr. I think Dennis did have some great comments. This is the opportunity we have to get this correct the first time. Yes, we want to get this through, but I think that it, it's imperative that we do it right and get it right.
Thank you, John.
I'd like to say something about the county comments. This is Dennis again. The, the county comments are based on their desire that development within the urban growth boundary be as intense as possible. And, and they blindly come up with a very high density of development. And it's very dangerous to go along with that in these villages, because if you were to change the ordinance in the village to a point that allows a much higher density, then what will, will happen is it becomes economically feasible for a developer to buy a couple of homes and put in many more dwelling units, significantly change the appearance of the village.
Yeah, I think that's, that's what we're wanting to avoid, and I did see the county comments and, and spoke to them briefly as well. Yeah, they're, they, they want to encourage the high density in the villages and cities. It's a fine line. We, we want affordable housing, which is going to take a little bit more density, but we also want to maintain the character of those villages. And, uh, so I, yeah. I think maybe we should revise this, based on John and Dennis's comments.
I agree with that.
This is Cindy. Just, just so everyone's on the same playing field, we did have that meeting with the county planners, and we, we certainly didn't buy into their theory as Dennis described, because it's exactly what they are, are supporting and promoting with their 2040 plan. What we did, there were, there are some tweaks that can happen, there's some tweaks that should happen, and as part of this whole process, we could probably incorporate some of Dennis's comments as well. The county planners are willing to not hold us to their 45-day review, so if we can get those changes in, get it back to them in time for their next meeting, I think is probably in mid-July. Look at that and not hold it for the 45 days.
But doesn't, doesn't that have to go back to the supervisors before it gets restarted, does it?
We can get that accomplished as well.
Okay.
In that timeframe. I know Scott Hain was, was working on some amendments. I, I know he was on vacation, but maybe either he or, or Nick could maybe comment on, on where they're headed with some of those changes based on that meeting with the county.
Yeah, I think I can start, and then maybe Nick can fill in some of the gaps if we, if we need to, Cindy. Based on, like you said, based on that meeting with the county, we looked at ways that we could, that there were a couple of, of minor adjustments that we felt that we could make that wouldn't substantially change what we're doing with this at all, but would still, would still accomplish the goal of trying to work with the county with what they're doing there. And like you said, we're not looking to increase the density in any way like that. There, there were a couple of, of minor changes that we, we have worked into a draft already. And having sat down with, with staff, we looked at Mr. Gueranger's comments, and we were able to make some revisions. There were some very good comments in there, we were able, able to make some revisions in there. I believe our idea would not, not to be taking a huge step back and making a wholesale structural change to, to the proposal, but maybe to make some sort of what we call cleanup or, or fine refinements to what we, what we had. I think we were comfortable, both Nick and I, and I think meeting with staff with, with the, the ordinance that we put, put forward to accomplish the goals of what the, the supervisors were looking for within the, within the village zone. So I think pretty quickly, we can have something that we can meet with staff and go over, like I said, a, a cleaned up version based on these comments and the county comments that could go back to the county again. We wouldn't hold up the process very, very substantially at all.
Then would it come back to us in our August meeting, Scott, or John?
Correct.
And I wonder if we shouldn't table it.
Yeah. That's probably where we're headed, Dwight, but before we take any action, I'd like to find out if any of the other residents, I believe there's some residents online, I'm not sure if they're there to have comments on this plan, but Cindy, have you got any requests in the chat room?
I have not.
Okay.
I have not either, Mr. Fullerton.
Okay, thanks.
Scott Wigglesworth asked to be recognized.
Go ahead, Scott. Scott, you're on.
Thank you, good evening. I just wanted to follow up with some of the comments tonight, and I just had a question for John quickly. I didn't get, when you were asked what the answer was, do we have any pending applications in the village zone right now?
No, we, we have, we have not received an application. We have discussed potential projects in the village zone that would not meet the requirements of this amendment.
How big is that project?
Eight to 10 town home apartments.
If, if this is not acted upon, can that be pushed through under the current ordinance?
Yes.
Is that a likely outcome?
Yes, it is. Does it, even if, before we have the chance to advertise this, if they submit anything, a sketch plan or anything that would require zoning hearing board approval, and they receive approval of that, it would protect them. During their application, they get, and any subsequent zoning hearing board approval is denied, then they would have to, and in that case, if the ordinance is advertised under the pending ordinance doctrine, they would have to comply with the new ordinance.
So I would just say to the commissioners, I understand, I agree with some of the comments that were made tonight about cleaning this up, and I'm glad they were pointing out, some of them to me seem minor in nature, didn't seem it was really changing the intent of the amendment here. The whole goal that us working with staff, the planning committee was to prevent a wholesale change of the village zone, and we were alarmed by a couple of projects that came in, where you have single-family homes that have been there for 50-plus years, and all of a sudden they're maxed out, and once a neighbor who had one individual or one family to deal with now has five different units right next door to him, and it's a big change. So I just ask that the commissioners take that into account when they're looking at tableing this tonight, and that's all.
John, I'd ask another, I'll say procedure question. If we were to recommend this to the board supervisors this evening, and they were to approve it as it stands, when could we come back and modify it to make some of these other changes?
We could work on the revisions as a separate amendment, as this one's getting approved, and then we could come back for the revision as soon as Scott and Nick have those revisions ready.
So if we would recommend approval of this and the supervisors would approve it, even if it's not, you know, the perfect amendment, it would have us covered for any short-term, big-scale projects, but we could then clean it up in the next several months or something like that?
That's correct.
Okay. The one comment I did want to make, and I don't know, John, if you could pull any of these up quickly. The two charts or the two maps that were included in Nate's package, I guess it was, that showed, let's just say Roar's, you could take a look at Roarstown. It seemed to have a good blend of properties that could be developed under the new ordinance versus those that couldn't. So I don't think it's, the new ordinance is totally going to lock people out of doing some things, but it seems that it's more, I'll say, a well-thought-through areas for that higher intensity development. If I read this correctly, anything that's surrounded by yellow or green could be developed per this amendment. The items that are only in red or only in blue could not be developed. And I think if you look at it, it probably, maybe not quite 50%, could still be developed, and the portions that would not be developed are the portions mostly along the main streets, which I think was the intention of what we wanted to accomplish. Okay, once again, go around the horn here, the planning commission, anybody else want to get their oar in the water as far as, as far as their thoughts on this amendment, whether it's good, bad, and different? Okay. Once again, Cindy, is there anybody from the chat that wanted to comment?
Mr. Ralph, you did have a comment. What options is the planning committee considering to provide for affordable housing?
I don't believe we are doing that per se with this, with this amendment, nor do I think we sponsor anything like that. As the org, we would, we would take that under consideration as somebody would bring a plan in to develop some site, whether it be here in Roarstown that we're looking at, or Lanusville, or anywhere else in the township.
If I may, Mr. Fullerton, I, I think the planning commission looks at every project based on the parameters of the use, and not necessarily of the level of affordability. So if it's a multifamily development, they look at it from a multifamily development perspective, not necessarily whether it's market rate or affordable housing.
Right, you're right, John, thanks, Clark.
There are no further comments.
Okay. Well, if there's no further discussion, I'd be interested in entertaining a motion on how we should make a recommendation to the board of supervisors. Okay, not hearing any volunteers. I'll make a motion that we recommend to the board of supervisors approval of the village residential and village center zone text amendment as presented this evening, with the understanding that open issues will be discussed in the very near future.
With that understanding, I'll second that motion.
Okay, the motion by the chair, seconded by Mr. Rohr, that we recommend approval of the village residential and village center zone text amendment as submitted this evening, with the proviso that the open issues be addressed as soon as possible. Oh, John, would you please? John, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Palakowski?
Hi.
Mr. Datter?
Hi.
Mr. Biggs?
Hi.
Mr. Hackett?
Hi.
Mrs. Byrne?
Hi.
Mr. Rohr?
Hi.
And Mr. Fullerton?
Hi.
I have seven to zero in favor of the motion.
I agree. Okay, thanks for everybody that spent all the time to put this ordinance together, or this text amendment. I know it's been a long time coming. It's not perfect, but we're getting there. So, I think it will achieve what we're trying to do in maintaining the character of our villages in the township. John, what do you have for new business?
I do not have anything.
Okay. You anticipate, I believe, the next meeting, a regular meeting on August 12th? There's nothing that would require us to meet in two weeks from now?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, Cindy, I'll ask you to check once again, is there any public comment waiting for us?
No, sir.
Okay. And having conducted the business for this evening, I'm going to conclude this meeting at 8:07 PM. Thanks, everybody, for participating.
Mr. Fullerton, before everybody leaves, we have some equipment being installed, and the hope is that we would correct any technical issues or difficulties or deficiencies, and we would have a working combination meeting in person and Zoom on the August 12th Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. Is there still no possibility to have a live meeting, again, four seasons, without Zoom?
The only reason for the four seasons is because of the anticipated large turnout for the next meeting.
But if we don't anticipate a large turnout, then could we be solely locked, solely in person at the township?
No, we're going to be moving forward, most likely, as in-person and Zoom.
Okay. All right, anything else, John?
No, sir.
Okay. Have a good evening, everybody.
Thanks. See you.
Good night.
Have a good night, guys.